Six o'clock and six out of seven of us are here, so we have enough for our quorum. And we will be joining into executive session. And for those of you watching virtually, we plan to be back around seven o'clock. We're going to move into executive session under O R S one nine two dot six six oh two D now to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. The board is now returning to regular open session. We will start with the flag salute.
(Inaudible).
And next is the board superintendent operating agreement. Erin's going to read it for us.
Under collaborative governance, members of the board and superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interests of students modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the board by individuals and district leadership. The board may only make decisions at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless authorized by a board vote. Under communication agreements, board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the superintendent or board chair prior to meetings of the board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of board meetings. When a board member and/or the superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the board superintendent team as appropriate. In the interest of public transparency and full, robust debate, board members will endeavor to actively engage in and contribute to board discussions and to share their perspectives on topics before the board. Full participation from members in advance of a vote supports the board in making informed, well-considered decisions on important district matters.
Thanks Erin. We're at number six now, the agenda review.
I would like to move to amend the agenda. Later on this evening, we have a discussion item on board zone boundaries. I would like to move that we postpone that in order to be able to reach back out to council with some additional questions that have come up.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we postpone the, what number is it?
Number thirteen A.
Thirteen A.
The board zone boundaries review discussion item so that staff can reach back out to council to get input. Any discussion?
As many of you know, I forwarded on an email that was given to us by a community member, and I think it would be wise for us to reach out to council at this time to have as much clarity as we can to solidify the direction and discussion. Thank you.
All right, we will vote.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, I'm assuming that we're all in agreement about the rest of the agenda. I'm not going to bring that up. Consent agenda though, number seven. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? All right, rule.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, now we're getting into the good part of the meeting. Student representatives and special guests, Maddox Fessler's on the list and maybe some other visitors come on up.
And Darby Hector wanted me to be sure to get a picture.
Good evening, my name is Hannah Basher and I am the A S B president.
Good evening, my name is Maddox Fessler and I'm the student recognition officer.
And my name is Addie Basher, the diversity officer here at S H S. Thanks so much for having us tonight to share the activities that have been happening at Silverton High School.
Our winter sports have been going strong as state is around the corner for multiple teams and athletes.
Swim team had an amazing district meet and it ended with our girls team being league champs. The boys and girls wrestling teams are preparing for their district meet this Friday. There are already several wrestlers qualifying for state. The state championship is at the end of the month.
The boys and girls basketball teams both have games tomorrow night versus West Albany with boys being away and girls home. Our unified team has a game at home as well. Currently in league, boys' basketball is seven and six and girls' basketball is twelve and one. Our dance team competed this last weekend and won first place in jazz and second place in contemporary.
Our spring sports have already started their winter training and can't wait for the seasons to start.
S H S clubs and activities are continuing to meet up and plan for the many events they put on and attend. This includes anything from tournaments and conventions to food drives and community cleanups.
Many of our C T E programs are entering their competition seasons including F F A, F B L A, and Skills U S A, which includes media arts, computer programming, firefighting, and more. Speech and debate has also been competing in multiple tournaments.
The Silverton Mass Despian Society is preparing for their big opening night of Shrek this Saturday, the eighteenth at seven P M. Come to support and enjoy a fun opening night celebration. Other nights include the nineteenth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and seven P M at a matinee on the twenty-fifth at two P M.
This past weekend was filled with fun and dancing at the winter formal, at the winter semiformal dance on Saturday. The opening assembly was last Friday crowning Barrettini and Aaron Towery's royalty.
A S B recognized our counselors last week for counselor appreciation week and are currently beginning their plans for the spring show, Best Fox Ever. All fundraising goes to SACAA and Medical Teams International. More information will be coming out soon.
We as a community would like to recognize Random Act of Kindness Week from February fourteenth through the twentieth. Random Act of Kindness Day will be February seventeenth. And we really wanted to start that off, we wanted to give you all Valentines the upcoming week.
Awesome.
Thank you.
As well as invitations and flyers to the upcoming Shrek.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
It's okay, we can share.
No worries.
Thank you.
You can have to dig into this later.
Thank you for your time and go Foxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You as well. All right, again, we're at the good part of our agenda. We have a couple of school principal reports. The first one tonight is going to be Mark Twain Elementary with Katie Beckett, principal. Oh, you're both coming at the same time?
We're actually all.
Okay, awesome. And Robert Frost Elementary School with Sarah Grimmer, principal.
Hello. Hi. Okay. Thanks for having us. This is my first, so we'll see how this goes. Before we get started, we're going to share a little bit about what's happening at both of our schools and how we're collaborating around P B I S and also some academics. With us tonight is our student success coach, Sophia Durst, and so we'll talk a little bit about the work she's doing at both of our schools as well. So this year, we've worked to align our work and collaborate around how to best serve our students and staff. At both sites, we were able to spend time with staff updating and revamping our P B I S handbook. The handbook reviews school-wide expectations and how to teach those in all the zones of our building. It also reviews how to track and report behavior as well as who to call for needed supports, and we've continued to review that and reteach after each of the breaks. We've worked to collaborate with our P B I S teams and district behavior team to align our response to behaviors and our tracking forms. We've also implemented a check-in, check-out system for students who need some additional supports throughout their day. We updated our school-wide expectations posters throughout both of our buildings to make those more visible for students and visitors and staff, and we reviewed and re-taught those. Each school has a sensory room to support students' needs and interventions. Students have scheduled breaks throughout their day as an accommodation. We've implemented zones of regulations in several classrooms with the goal to have it implemented schoolwide, and staff attended a training in December around zones and how to teach it to students and implement it in their classrooms. Zones of regulation is also implemented in our sensory rooms. Our schools will also be attending the M T S S conference with an emphasis on P B I S in April. Counselors, student success coach, and administrators will both be attending for our schools and other schools in the district as well. And plateworks also continues to be an integral part of our P B I S systems, and we've had additional trainings this year for staff, and we continue to see the positive impact that it has for us during recess.
We're also really excited about some things going on with our early classrooms, our kindergarten first and second grade. Teachers are implementing a new phonics foundational skills-based reading program. We provided that, it's called Guided Phonics, and it's based on the science of reading. And it's an explicit and systematic program that teaches the earliest literacy skills, so phonemic awareness, hearing sounds and words, and phonics. So we believe that having all of our teachers K two implementing the same evidence-based program will be just monumental for our early readers and pay off good time as they go through our system. We provided teachers training on the science of reading, also time to plan and prepare the materials. And also, the fun part is collaborating with each other, so being able to go see your, you know, teacher partner, teach some of the lessons and learn from each other is really exciting. It's just inspirational to see them collaborating with each other across the building and doing amazing work. We've seen a ton of growth from fall to winter in the classrooms where it's really established. And I'm a reading specialist, so it's at the heart of what I've always, you know, been about, and so it's pretty exciting, so. Also, all of our teachers continue the unit mapping work every Wednesday afternoon, they're very dialed into that. And near after tomorrow, almost all of our classroom teachers will be trained in the assessment cadre so they know the work behind developing common standards-based assessments, so that's really exciting too. So good things happening, both behavior and academics in our schools.
Yeah, and we're excited to keep working together and collaborating around instruction and our behavior supports for our schools. And hopefully you enjoyed the pictures.
Great to have a thought partner, so good for you for collaborating.
Yeah, I love the collaboration that you, that yes, we have two separate buildings and each one of them by nature is going to have their own personality, but you guys are having consistency in bringing that into both student bodies and communities, so I think it's great that you guys collaborate so well, so thanks for that.
Thanks so much.
All right, number ten, Silver Falls Education Association.
Hello, board, thank you for listening to us today. My name is Eric Anderson, I'm a social studies teacher here at the high school.
I'm Josh Craig, I'm an English teacher here at the high school.
So what we have prepared for us today is a one statement that is written by collaboration of many members of the union that I will read out loud as representation for the union. Then both Josh and I will share some personal experiences we've been having this year. So from the union, we mutually agreed to move into mediation with the Silver Falls School District bargaining team in early December with the idea that we would work together and come to an agreement. Over the past two mediation sessions, this has not happened. Today, our bargaining team spent hours away from our students waiting for the district to engage. We began today expecting to receive a counterproposal to the work we did last week on Tuesday. Our proposal language addressed actual problems that are our everyday reality in our classroom. Today, two hours ago, our bargaining team was told that our district administration refuses to respond to our class size proposal. They have misrepresented what we have asked to our community. We have not proposed class caps, rather, we have proposed class targets. The union finds that this is unacceptable. It does not represent our Silverton values. It doesn't honor our community and our students. Our teachers deserve more. Later tonight, you'll hear a presentation from the district about S I A funds. We hope it includes plans to address class sizes as this is an acceptable use of S I A funds. We received compensation counterproposal at five P M neglecting five of our mediation proposals, grievance, teacher discipline, vacancies, transfers, class sizes, and work year, work day.
So I just want to share a few of my own thoughts, and I tend to be a pretty transparent, honest person, and I generally stay out of situations like this. I like to frankly get along with people, and confrontation isn't fun. But this is a necessary, I wouldn't call it necessary evil, I think it's just necessary. And I'm born and raised from Silverton, my whole family is. I'm a two thousand nine grad, I've been teaching here for nine years. It's a dream job. I mean, I'm living my dream in a lot of ways. The challenge is that what I'm seeing from my own point of view is that I brought my family here, we've got two young daughters, and it's getting harder and harder to just survive. And I don't mean that to sound overly dramatic and strike fear, I mean really, you know, I was a head football coach for five years and we had great success there. I sat down to focus on family, and I didn't realize that although the stipend you make as a head football coach isn't very much, you know, you don't do it to get rich, we know that, like at high school level. It's been the difference between us getting through the paycheck and having to live on our credit card for a week. I mean, that's just the truth, it's embarrassing to admit honestly, as like, you know, kind of leader in my household, my wife is a co-leader with me. It's a bad feeling to just struggle so much, you know? Recently, we thought we could get through the school year with her working three days at the high school, and we learned probably the first week of October, that was not even close to feasible. So we're fortunate that she picked up two extra days at Sequoia, so she is full-time now. And it's still, you know, towards the end of the month, it's like, okay, buzz out the credit card. And I just tell you that to be honest, because it, you know, I'm a young dad, I'm thirty-two years old, and I think if you, many of us have children here, it's naturally a tough time that we're going through. But it, I don't think it has to be this way. I mean, you know, not that I do a lot of digging into it, but talking to colleagues that know more and doing a little bit of my own research, I do know that there's better compensation in districts that are a lot like ours. And being that I love my family and I love Silverton, it means so much to me that we are comparable and competitive in the way we pay our teachers. And as I've said, Silverton's an amazing place, it really is. That just can't be a reason to get teachers here. The world's much more unstable than it was when I started nine years ago. And we need, we need to do what's right by us, everybody in this room, everybody in our town, and get good teachers here, and then keep them here by paying them the right way. I've gotten several, probably three to five good friends who have left, for a lot of the reason is because they need to make more money. And that's sad to me. And my plan is retire here, but I also need to survive here.
So unlike Josh, I did not grow up in Silverton, but I think a unique distinction is I got to choose Silverton to be where I wanted to be. I've known the town for a long time and I've always wanted to be here. I also, my wife is a teacher in this district at Mark Twain. I also have a one-year-old and a three-year-old child that I very much want to see continue to go to this district. Like Josh just talked about, I've seen a lot of my fellow younger teachers leave the district in the last couple of years. And to everybody's credit here, I am not sure if it's about what we've been bargaining for or not, was there a reasoning that they leave? They did. To me, the more concerning issue has been replacing them. Jobs that used to get fifty to seventy applicants sometimes have now been getting frequently less than five applicants for the teaching positions there. I'm nervous if teachers leave en masse, it'll be very difficult to replace them here. I also desire to retire here myself. One of the reasons they asked me to come here to speak primarily is my position as a coach. I coach football, I'm going to coach golf, I've coached wrestling, I've coached baseball, I coached middle school basketball here at a game earlier tonight, that's why my voice is a little hoarse, it didn't go very well for the Duke Creek B team tonight. But as my position as a coach, I'm quite a bit more visible to the community than a lot of the other teachers that are in this district, and I think they perhaps wanted me to try to relay a message more as a coach here. So as a coach, I want to state on behalf of the union here that we want this to work. We are willing to do what it takes to make it work. We want to play ball. We can do this because we have to do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're on to number eleven, public comment. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen, and you likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum Anybody want to speak? Come on up. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Patrick Lusier.
And Patrick, before you start, can you just explain your relationship to the district?
I've lived here since nineteen eighty-nine, my three kids graduated from high school here.
Okay, and what's your topic tonight?
I just want to talk a little bit about what's happening the last couple of months.
Okay, so you have three minutes, and Erin will give you a warning.
All right, so I have a few questions about the situation that's been going on. I play with dollars and cents and budgets all day long, okay? As a mortgage loan officer, I look at budgets day in, day out, I know what works and know what doesn't work. So that being said, the funding of the schools is a combination of children attending classes and appropriate taxes. So my question number one, what was the attendance before COVID and what is it today? Can you break it down by school? Number two, if we have lower attendance, have we seen a drop in staff while maintaining a healthy student-teacher ratio? And if not, why not? Number three, also, I'd like to see a breakdown per school, per student spending. Middle school versus high school, in-town versus out-of-town. Okay, I'm just a numbers guy, okay? Who's responsible, question number four, who's responsible for locating grant money, subsidy money at the state or federal or even private funding? Are we using all the money that's out there or are we leaving money on the table? Number five, staying with spending and expenditures. When was the last time the district and office staff received raises and for how much? Number six, teachers are paid to teach. How much of the time is actually spent teaching? How much time of classroom, is classroom preparation? How much time on administration and paperwork? Please break it down by school. Number seven, who approves expenditures at the district and district staff levels? Who approves and reviews expenditures for each school? When I receive those answers, may I request that the board does their own double-checking of that information? I have seen where the district went to social media and published information on district website, which given how long this process has been going on, makes me question the accuracy. In fact, whomever used social media to put out incorrect, incomplete, or false statements should read a book titled How to Infraence and Influence People, especially while we're in the midst of a negotiation. Sadly, the way I'm wired and given my profession, I trust the information I receive, but I verify that information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to online.
So we have Elena Mannish with her hand up.
Okay.
Daniel, can you promote Elena? And Elena's hand is no longer up, so I don't know, because sometimes that happens by accident, so I don't know.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak?
We do have Sheri Reed with her hand up.
All right, Sheri Reed, let's admit her.
Promote Sheri. And I think Sheri took her hand down, so if, and it's an easy accident to happen, so if they put their hand up, I will make sure to keep tabs on that.
All right, last call for the live audience, although it's all live, I don't know what to call it, in-person audience. All right, we will move on then to number twelve, administrator and staff reports. First, we're going to hear the superintendent report from Scott Drew, and we'll move on to Leslie after that.
So Leslie has some updates to give on the adoption, and then we're going to continue on with our presentation for tonight.
Okay. So on the agenda, sixth, eighth grade E L A materials adoption with Erin Willow and Katton Sherwood. You can see they're not here this evening because we met late last week and they would like all of the sixth through eighth grade E L A teachers to get together to review the materials before they make their recommendation to you. So we're, we have that scheduled, and they will be coming in March to present to you. So that was a last-minute change, but I kept this on the agenda so you know it's, they are actively working, looking at materials, they just are really trying to do their due diligence with their colleagues before they come present to you. Also in March, just a heads up, we will be having K twelve math also come to present to you about the work they've been doing, looking at materials. So now we're all going to move to the front table for the next part of the presentation.
Okay, we're going to be moving to twelve C, integrated guidance draft application.
Okay, good evening. We are here this evening to present our draft integrated guidance application. This is our contents, O D E made this PowerPoint for us. So the purpose of our presentation is to share what was prioritized in our plan, given the input we've received, to explain how the plan was developed, to hear additional feedback on the plan as we're still in the developing stage, and then we are introducing this plan for approval. The board is required to have an action item in March before we submit our application to the state. So know that we have a work session coming up where we can present more information or answer questions you may have this evening, and then it will be an action item on the March agenda. So the background from the Oregon Department of Education, this is an integration effort from both education leaders and state legislatures to combine six separate funding sources that are all grants. And really, S I A and high school success are the two major grants that we receive in our district, and so we have been doing double duty, going out for engagement, collecting data, and we have lots of interlapping areas, and so we're able to work together now on one application. So hopefully, reducing-
We are here this evening to present our draft integrated guidance application. This is our contents. ODE made this PowerPoint for us. So the purpose of our presentation is to share what was prioritized in our plan, given the input we've received, to explain how the plan was developed, to hear additional feedback on the plan as we're still in the developing stage. And then we are introducing this, uh, plan for approval. The board is required to have an action item in March before we submit our application to the state. So know that we have a work session coming up where we can present more information or answer questions you may have this evening and then it will be an action item on the March agenda. So the background from the Oregon Department of Education, this is an integration effort from both education leaders and state legislatures to combine six separate funding sources that are all grants. And really, SIA and High School Success are the two major grants that we receive in our district. And so we have been doing double duty, going out for engagement, collecting data, and we have lots of overlapping areas and so we're able to work together now on one application. So hopefully reducing the burden and redundancies. So these are the six programs, the six grants that the state has combined. So High School Success or Measure 98, Student Investment Account, Continuous Improvement Planning, Career and Technical Education, Everyday Matters, which is attendance, and Early Indicator and Intervention Systems. So you can see those programs have all of the same common elements and common goals and we were required to apply for each biennium of funding and then do quarterly reports for all of those. So that's just a summary of those six items. So High School Success is really focused on improving graduation rates and college and career readiness. SIA is really meant to support students' mental health, behavioral needs, and increase academic achievement and reduce disparities for our student focal groups. Our, our school, Continuous Improvement Planning, very similar to school improvement planning, is working on educator collaboration, data analysis, professional learning. CTE, I hope is self-explanatory for us all. Early Indicator and Intervention Systems is really looking at data analysis and we do actually receive about $10,000 for that. So we're excited about that. And then Everyday Matters is attendance and all of that funding actually goes to the WESD and they support us in our work around that. So our planning team is not all here this evening. Kirsten and Patrick are both here representing High School Success. Jamie McCarty, Sheldon Lazzier, and Brett Davison were also on our planning team. We've been meeting at least once a month since the fall. So a lot of work has been going into this. The required process, we are required to use an equity lens, solicit community engagement, complete a comprehensive needs assessment, consider the Oregon Quality Education Model and Student Success Plans, review CTE input, and examine impact on our focal students and create a four-year plan with outcomes, strategies, and activities. So now I'm turning it over to Scott.
I just wanted to take a, a minute just to, to thank our team and a lot of work has gone into preparing this, this report as well. And when we talk about the word educational equity, I hope it's clear to you now through all of my presentations to the board and how we address challenges related to students' social, emotional, learning, and growth, and academics, and how the two are inextricably linked, that everything we do is viewed through an equity lens. And when I've presented to you, that's actually exactly what we're doing. We're taking a look at how do we take on as a system, raising the level of social, emotional growth and achievement of all kids and then focusing on the kids who need a little bit more. And that truly is at the heart of student educational equity. And these are some guiding questions that we, that we use. And I know that you read my weekly updates that went out on Friday, my opening message, which was written towards how we're addressing student equity related to our equity policy. If you haven't read that, I'd like to direct you back to that as well.
Okay. So community engagement highlights. You all were a part of many of these. As you know, we held listening and learning sessions at every K-8 and K-5 school last year. We heard a lot of input from a lot of community members and families. Scott has done a great job with all of his presentations at board meetings specifically focused on student data and just informing you and the public about our student data and trend lines. This is our fourth year participating in the Youth Truth Survey that's open right now for students, staff, and parents. So we have three years of historical data. We have gone back and done focal group feedback with all of our students and staff at Sequoia Falls Academy, SHS, and SMS student clubs. And our community liaison has done specific phone outreach for our families who are unhoused, who are Spanish-speaking, or have been needing other support in other ways. So families, over 30 families that she has been supporting personally, she's gone out and done phone surveys with. And then we've also interacted with community group leaders to really get specific feedback on our plan.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Barnes. And so looking at what the high school's been really focusing in on is community engagement and we've really been looking to do outreach with our business leaders or people that we work with within the school. And so we hosted Career Day in December. We had over 165 professionals come and join us that day to talk with our students, tell them about how did you get into your job? How did you get started? And hopefully help our students find different avenues that they had never even thought of before. And so it was a really great day for us, but at the same time, it gave those professionals a chance to see our facility, a chance to talk with our students, see the amazing young people that we have, and be able to really talk with how can we serve better? How can we participate with our community? The other way that CTE is really involved with the community is through advisory groups. Not in the form of what we would have as an advisory group in the high school where students go to a homeroom, but our advisory groups, we have nine programs to study here at the high school. We have one career-ready program with our pre-apprenticeship program. And each of those programs has an advisory group who works with them to make sure that we're on track, that we know what's going on. When we receive grants, we get their support to help us make decisions on what our next step is, where do we need to go from there? And so it's really important that we listen to them so that we're in the right place, getting ready to have our students prepared to work for them in the future and at the same point, helping us keep our technology, our next moves at the highest rate possible. And so that really helped us like with our CTE revitalization grant this last year and lots of different steps to help us move forward.
Okay, so we completed a pretty comprehensive needs assessment and the highlights from that needs assessment would be our student achievement data over the past seven years. If you remember, just a few months ago, Scott did a presentation and showed you all of that, those trend lines. So specifically, our student focal groups are achieving consistently less across third grade reading over the last seven years. Our Youth Truth data from the last three years with our student focal groups, our students are reporting that they feel less connected to their school communities than other students. Our school communities value a well-rounded education. Music instruction at all schools was consistently raised during our listening and learning sessions and we had a superintendent's work group who made a recommendation to the board because of that input. And then high school.
Hi there, Patrick Mulligan, one of the assistant principals. Another thing we found too with the high school success side and talking transitions for our students that are participating in transition programs, for even this last summer and coming into this school year, we saw significantly higher attendance rates and GPA rates specifically for our freshmen than their peers. So looking at how we continue that trend and continue that access for our students as well as looking under high school success for accelerated and CTE course opportunities and access that students that participate, those that are completers also have an even higher rate of both attendance and graduation and academic achievement. So those two are definitely we look at of why we want to continue that focus in providing access and opportunities for students.
Okay, so our plan, there are not many, any significant changes in the plan that we've been using the last two years, in the last biennium. We are prioritizing mental health supports for our students, focusing on dropout prevention, instruction for our student focal groups, well-rounded education, so continuing music instruction that we heard our community really valued. We're looking at a new data system to support student data tracking. We're focusing on transition supports between grades and between schools, developing cross-curricular alignments based on post-secondary student plans, and providing opportunities for the expansion of CTE and advanced coursework. So that's the big level, big picture highlight of the plan. The state is having us write outcomes this year that are based on all the same metrics. So we look at our data and basically are writing a goal. 90% graduation rate across all demographic groups. 100% of ninth graders on track to graduate with a focus on ensuring our English language learners are enrolled in the appropriate coursework to ensure on-time graduation. 53% of third graders reading at grade level across all demographic groups. And 95% of our students regularly attend school with a focus on our students with disabilities and our students of color. So the plan, the strategies that we'll use to meet those outcomes is providing a therapeutic educational setting for our high school students, so Sequoia Falls Academy, professional development for all staff in order to provide equitable learning outcomes across the district, focus on transition planning between grade levels and schools, implement a multi-tiered system of support, implement an engaging music instruction for all students, and provide multiple opportunities for students to access advanced and CTE coursework. So the SIA budget for annually is about $2.5 million and the High School Success budget is about $1.1 million. So we don't have our budget linked on this slide because we've been in the midst of doing some other things with our business office and so they don't quite have it finished yet. So that's why we're, we would like to come back to the work session to go over the budget with you. But here's about the rough estimate. Sequoia Falls Academy has about nine full-time staff. We have about three school counselors and two social workers, so five FTE total. For our guaranteed and viable curriculum work, we're proposing about $200,000 in professional development and adding two FTE and instructional coaches of our own internal employees to support our academic instructional work, maintaining our 3.0 FTE of highly qualified music teachers. Staff and programs to assist grade-level transitions, that would be about four FTE, really focused on, so four full-time positions focused on transitions, especially from middle school to high school and high school to college. CTE staff, professional development and materials, and community engagement. So that's a lot of staff members that we're paying for. That's, the majority of our budget is staff members.
Do you know what percent Sequoia Falls? Sequoia Falls is like our flagship SIA expenditure. Do you know like what percent or chunk?
I don't off the top of my head, but I'm happy to collect questions from you and do a more detailed report around the budget at the work session for you. Okay, the state is also, this is a little revolutionary, they're asking us to do tiered planning and budgeting because they don't know what the budgets will be yet. So they're, basically we are making our wish list of if we get more money, what would we add? Or if we can't hire something, what would we do instead so that it all gets approved at once and we can move things around and be flexible? So definitely adding instructional coaches is on our wish list, increasing transition opportunities, adding professional development opportunities, those are all on our wish list. And we'll have a full tiered plan with the budget. It's a separate tab in the budget to show you once we have the budget. So how does the state understand success? This is, starts to be the complicated part. We are being asked to turn in draft longitudinal performance growth targets with our application. We are getting more guidance as we speak right now about that. And so the LPGTs will be flexible and be able to change once our application is submitted. But basically, you can see the trend lines there. That's what they're looking at. They want baseline targets, they want gap closing targets for our student focal groups, and then stretch targets. So these are the common metrics that the state will be looking at. So third grade reading proficiency rates measured by English Language Arts, ninth grade on-track rates, regular attendance rates, four-year or on-time graduation rates, and five-year completion rates. And then districts are able to set their own local metrics if there's other targets or data that we're interested in tracking. So we're, all districts are setting their goals around those targets. So this is the same goals that I shared earlier in this presentation, just so you can see this is where we're at with our goals based on our local data. We, the same data that you went through and looked at the trend lines, our team went through and, and set goals.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So 90% grad rate across all demographic groups. You could read that two ways. Is that just 90% graduation rate a period? Or do you mean each, all demographic groups hit 90%?
All demographic groups would hit 90%. And so calling out the demographic groups or specific demographic groups is really what the state is aiming or asking of us and that's the examples that they gave us in our workshop, is to really focus on either a certain subgroup that we're really targeting or to call out all demographic groups. We want to see all students grow.
I have a second question.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So the, the third bullet just strikes me. So when is, okay, same question. So when is that captured and, when, when in the school year, I guess, is that being?
This would be the, the smarter balanced assessment, so the state assessment that's in the spring. Our window is after spring break, so usually April and May is when students take their assessments. And right now, our demographic groups are as low as in the twenties.
Right. It just, it seems odd to target 53% as a goal.
Well, at, at third grade, but then the goal is to get them up. Can you speak a little bit to why it's only 53% is at third grade and kind of how you, how you get them back up there?
We're, right now, about 50% of our third graders are reading at grade level according to the state assessment. And so a moderate goal would be to raise to 53%. So raising 3% of our student population at third grade. So...
But then, but, but I mean, how does that, as they go up to fourth, fifth, sixth, and up, how do you bring them up? How do you target them to get everyone to reading at grade level? Just various ways?
Well, you, you heard Katie and Sarah's presentation today about really targeting K-2 instruction and that's a huge part of our work is really going back to the drawing board and making sure we have solid instruction in all of our classrooms for K-1, 2 students that explicitly teaches reading. So breaking down the skills and explicitly teaching, not just following what the textbook is saying to do. And that's a huge part of our guaranteed and viable curriculum work as well. So focused on the core is what we call it first, so what every kiddo gets, and then building our multi-tiered system of support. So making sure that every student is getting the extra that they need during the school day so that we're closing that gap. So we don't want to wait until third grade. We want to make sure we're explicitly teaching reading in kindergarten and if a kiddo isn't responding, that we're doing something extra then. But that's a large, 52, only 53% is a, that's a big gap. And so we're trying to also set realistic goals so that we can see progress and continue to grow. I don't know, Scott, you want to?
I mean, we've had, we've had presentations on, on this before, so I'm just kind of following. I mean, has this always been a problem throughout time? And you know, some kids come in and their parents are reading and they're good to go and off they go and some are just need a lot of catching up. Is that just something's always kind of been?
Yeah. It's, it, for the last seven years of data that we've reviewed for this, we have had the same trend line. So our, our third graders aren't meeting where we would want them to be, to be successful. There's a lot of catch-up.
Thank you.
And the 3% improvement from baseline is just for this next year. This is next year's goal.
Yes.
Right? So, so hopefully over time you keep raising that bar to eventually you get to 100%.
Yes.
Well, and it's across the demographic.
Right, right.
Yeah, we've got some significant gap closing to get everyone to 53%.
Gotcha.
And the state's going to come back and give us feedback on this, whether it's written appropriately or not. I mean, we've, we got a little bit of guidance and they're going to review it and then come back and give us more information.
It's a good place to target because they can't read, they can't absorb math and everything else that follows, so.
So what happens next? We will continue to work on this the next couple of board meetings. We'll ask you for an action item in March. Once you approve it, then I will submit our application to ODE with the board minutes that you approved it. ODE will review it and then they are adding something new. They have a review team of community members that are, is reviewing their review. And... And so, that's a new element that they've added. And they will then, once that happens, give us feedback on how we did in our application. And that's it. Questions? And like I said, I'm, I'm planning on coming back in at the work session. So if you have specific questions, feel free to email Scott or I, and we'll be prepared for that.
Leslie, oh, sorry. I wanted to know, oh, hi, it's Lori. I don't know, hopefully you can hear me. Leslie, I know that it's been a little bit of a struggle to get music teachers. Is there any update at this time? I'm not, I, I'm sort of agnostic at this point, so I was wondering.
Sure. So we, Jamie McCarty has hired a music teacher for Victor Pointon Evergreen. So the second semester, they will have a music teacher. Pradam is continuing to use their retired music teacher. So she has been working every few months since the fall. We, we had a music teacher at Butte Creek and Scotts Mills that has transferred. So she taught the first semester at Butte Creek and Scotts Mills. And now she is teaching the second semester at Central Hall and Silvercrest. So every K-8 will have a semester of music instruction. And we will repost all of our teaching positions and to go out for hiring for next year.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm a little surprised that it's been interesting to find, I mean, with the arts, I would just assume that there would be many that would jump at the opportunity. But wish you all the best on that.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet.
I was just going to ask a quick question. If you could elaborate just a little bit on your transition folks that you talked about. What are, what are they really facilitating for those kiddos? Can you help us understand that a little bit better? And you talked about transition from one grade level to the next.
Yes, so for the, the High School Success part, what we're really talking about is that transition of our eighth-grade students coming in as freshmen. And we know that especially in our, you know, amazing, unique community of Silverton, we have some different experiences for our eighth-grade students. So how do we help bridge that as they come into the high school? And then secondarily, for our students as they're developing that pathway for what their post-secondary plan is, if that's college, career, technical, continued education, apprenticeship, whatever that may be, how do we help bridge that piece with some focusing on finding connections to colleges, trade schools, apprenticeship opportunities? So a lot of things we do, but really be able to have some, a dedicated person that can help with that, as well as some programs in place to help support our, especially our incoming freshmen, so that they can be successful. So similar to how we set third grade reading to help kids all the way through and be successful, how do we set our freshmen to be successful for their experience here at the high school?
Cool, awesome. Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions?
Thank you all for coming and your hard work on the big application.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is 12D Financial Report. And Steve is not here, but Kim Dowd. And Kim, your, your role now is financial controller, right? Are you going to fill in for Steve?
I was just going to reference that the complete financial report is linked on the agenda as every month, as well as the enrollment report by school that we provide every month as well. So both of those are available on Board Book. And we welcome any questions after our members have a chance to look at that.
Anybody have questions, or Kim?
All right, I think we'll move on then. Let's go to discussion items. Oh, we're not, we're going to, 13A is, we're postponing until we can get more feedback on that. And 14 is public comment. So if you would like to speak and are attending virtually, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you are attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board. Go ahead, Eliza. Can you share your name and your relationship to the district?
I'm Eliza Tworland, and I'm a parent here in the district.
And what is your topic tonight?
I was just listening to this presentation. And one of the concerns that I've had over the course of my time with my children, who are talented students, is this problem with them not being, a lot of students not being able to read, to clap grade proficiency by third grade. And I noticed it with my son, who's now a junior, that he wasn't feeling challenged. And then I've now noticed it with my daughter, who's in fifth grade. And she went into at-home learning during third grade. And I think that maybe some of the problems that she was experiencing, I thought that they were related to having to learn from home rather than at school. But hearing that we're at an average 50% reading rate makes me think that maybe there could be other ways to work around this problem. I don't know if you guys have thought about maybe not having it age-related, but rather skill-related when you make your reading group levels? Because for those two students who are proficient at reading, it really drags on. And staying interested in school when you're just waiting for other people to catch up becomes really challenging. And we have to provide a lot of extra supports for those kids in terms of extracurricular activities and things like that, which fortunately, out at Butte Creek, they have quite a few. So I'm very grateful for that. I guess that's mostly what I wanted to say.
Thanks, Eliza.
Thanks, Eliza.
Thank you.
Anybody online, Dan?
I see no hands raised.
Any other in-person folks? All right, we're at number 15, Future Agenda Item Request. Anybody have an item that they'd like to request?
I will sail this one again. Is there any way we can consider farm-to-table, even if it's for one, one day? Just to see if it's possible. Not to encroach on what Sedexo does and the nourishment they provide for students. But I know that we've had Thanksgiving meals provided. And it would, it would just be a nice possibility, that's all. That's it.
Anybody else? All right, we are now going to move into executive session under ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, a sick leave bank request. So our live audience, we will ask you to leave now. We will come back into regular session, but it will just be to adjourn. So you're not going to miss anything more. All right, we are back into, in regular session. We're going to consider a sick leave bank request. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, for a sick leave bank request for Terry Mills for up to 25 days, and for Kathy Fenimore, 20 days.
I think we need to do it in two separate.
Oh, two separate motions?
Yep.
Okay. First motion is for Terry Mills for up to 25 days.
Second.
So it moved and seconded to approve a sick leave bank request for Terry Mills for up to 25 days. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yep.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a sick leave bank of 20, of up to 20 days for Kathy Fenimore.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a sick leave bank request for Kathy Fenimore for up to 20 days. All right, let's vote.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right. If there is no objection, we will adjourn.